All those in favor of approving the April 30th, 2020 meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May 21st meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the minutes for Thursday, May the 21st.
Second? Questions? Discussion? All those in favor of approving May 21st, 2020 meetings, say aye. Minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving down to accounts payable.
I have to say that I cannot, I had them for a while. I've lost those, so if anybody else can do them, fine.
I'll do them. I move approve accounts payable for May 28th, 2020, in the amount of $197,458.92.
Second?
Okay, the motion is before us. Are there's any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving accounts payable for May 28th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Accounts payable for June 4th.
I'll move approval of accounts payable for June 4th, in the amount of $419,177.2.
Second?
Okay, do we have any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor of approving accounts payable for June 4th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Manual checks for June 5th. Which I thought I had.
Yeah, I don't see mine either.
I don't see them.
Yeah. No, I don't, I printed off everything I thought that was, you know, I don't think we have manual checks yet for June 5th. We'll skip that and move on to payroll.
I'll move approval of payroll for dated May 28th, in the amount of $259,322.84.
Second?
Connected to... No, it just has my settings, but it's not telling me which one I'm actually connected to. Wait, status, maybe that. Yeah, okay.
Stephanie, are we okay?
Hi Commissioners, this is Jessica, if you can hear me. I think the county, Stephanie's in the office, I think the county's having connectivity issues at the moment.
Okay, so we should just delay our meeting at this point and wait until we hear that we are back up. That's what we're, we're in recess until we know everything is operational. Well, shall we finish the motion that's on the floor, the May 28th, for the approval of payroll?
Sure.
Okay. All those in favor of approving payroll for May 28th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
There she is. I don't hear her, though.
Stephanie, we can't hear you.
No.
No.
It says I'm unmuted.
There you are.
There you go.
Right. Yeah, okay. All right, you can hear me?
Yes.
All right.
So we're good to go?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I apologize for that, I don't know what happened.
Okay, that's all right. We are at public comment?
Yes, please. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, we did, is there anyone who would like to, can you guys hear me okay still?
Yes, I can.
Um, if there are any attendees who would like to make public comments, you can use the raise your hand function, and I will unmute you if you would like to make public comments. We also did receive one written public comment. I think I can pull it up here in a second. So I'll wait a second for for public comments. No. And I will read the written one. As soon as I find it. All right, and again, I am going to read this one, but if you would like to make public comment, please feel free to raise your hand, and I will unmute your microphone after I read the written public comment that we received. Our comment is from Mr. David Tab. "I, David Tab, a lifelong resident/taxpayer, protest the Jefferson County Commission hindering residents/taxpayers from their recorded public comment. It is time to reopen the meetings to the public comment or stop making decisions that affect the resident taxpayer of this county, such as appointments, purchases, projects, new and old, permits, studies, or any nonessential approvals and/or actions. It appears the JCC and the Jefferson County Administrator have yet to release the FIOA of the 12 proposals bids connected to the proposed courthouse complex. It appears the JCC has failed to sit properly for the approval of minutes since March 17th, 2020. The JCC was not sitting properly." The same. Okay. "Not sitting properly to approve the minutes and the commission was not proper to hold a meeting. The approval of manual checks is just wrong." So this is, okay, no, it's not, sorry. I thought it was the same public comment from before, but it's not, I apologize. "If you have a budget, just stick to it." Public comment: "It appears the agenda packet was not sent this time. Agenda number one, Dr. Reedy, Jefferson County Health Department. Shouldn't this be done to the public, not just to the Jefferson County Commission? Agenda number three, Neil McLaughlin, Lynn Goodwin. We are still under a pandemic and only essential services are required. The JCDA is not essential. Wasn't there a hiring freeze?" Agenda number six. "Update regarding Charlestown Article 147 CTUB. Did not see the agenda packet of what you are suggesting." Agenda number seven: "Waiting for ambulance fee payment. The ambulance fee is not legal in any way. That is really nice not to charge a late fee. Business and residents are going to lose everything. What is the JCC going to do for that? Correspondent information: This comment should be with the May 21st, 2020 fake meeting. The public reserves the right to call out the public officials to follow the required laws to ensure the constitutional rights of the government. The government's order to stay at home deprived the public of notice and comments without reimbursement provision. This is affecting every resident and business owner to be responsible for all losses, including the government. It's hard to be safe with the current county commission at this time. Have a nice day."
Stephanie, this is Ralph. I know sometimes I've seen on my screen the raise your hand thing. I don't see it now. Is that, is that a different program?
Yeah, so because you're not an attendee, you don't have the raise your hand, you are, so there are three categories of people, organizers, that's usually your staff, panelists, which is you, and then attendees, which is the public. So the public has the raise your hand function.
All right, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Stephanie, it just looks like your screen froze. Are you still with us? Oh, dear.
This is Daniel Look, so I don't mean to chime in. Your go-to webinar is down, but the audio on the telephone to which I'm speaking is working.
Okay, yeah, I'm, we're having, I'm having some technical difficulties here at the county. I'm gonna try to use my phone to do it instead of my computer because it's not, the internet isn't working very well. Thank you for that.
Dan, can you hear the rest of us?
So far.
Okay.
Every now and then I get tremendous vibration noise. I don't know if somebody has their Barcalounger on vibrate or not.
Right, I got that too.
Yeah, I hear that too, so, sounds like an airplane or a airplane flying overhead, one of those radio controlled things.
No, I don't want to attend.
All right, Stephanie's back, I see her.
Okay, it's just getting in and out. Yeah, I'm gonna try to log in with a different device for, so can we, I apologize, can we pause for a second because I'm afraid it's gonna go in and out like the using for the internet.
I agree that we should, we're going to pause the meeting, for anybody listening or trying to watch and try to figure out the technical difficulties.
Hey Ralph, would you mute yourself for just a minute?
Mute my what?
Would you mute yourself for just a minute?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I think that the airplane noise, it must be coming from your, maybe it's a bad connection or something. Because when, I heard it until you muted yourself, and then after after you muted yourself, I didn't hear it anymore. So I'm not sure, maybe it's on your end, I was just, I don't know, I'm just thinking.
Maybe it's Ralph's pacemaker.
Maybe.
Pat said he had an old laptop, and that may be making the noise, you know, the old fan on those things.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. I was just trying to figure out, because I haven't heard that before, so that's, that's, I was just curious, trying to figure out.
I don't hear anything else here, but the laptop does seem to have a fan in it.
Yeah, I don't hear it right now. I heard it before you muted yourself, but I don't hear it right now. Maybe it fixed its own problem, I don't know.
Ralph, if that's your fan, you should probably get that fixed before it fries your hard drive.
Yeah, the, the cursor's already quit on it. I had to buy, you know, one of these to do that too. Laptop gets old after five years.
Oh, oh yes. These electronics don't last too long.
I wish mine would last for five years. I get three out of them most of the time, but maybe at this one, I might be able to stretch to four, we'll see.
I forgot to unplug the telephone call and just had a call, so we're still having technical difficulties?
Yes, Stephanie's not with us yet again.
Right, so I see Dr. Reedy, so we are on pause until we get all that figured out.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I see Stephanie, under the, under the name of Sandy McDonald. I can't hear you. Okay.
Hopefully that's not me.
That's not, it's me, it's me.
Okay.
Okay. So I think it's working now. Okay. No, is it working now? Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yay, okay. So I apologize for that, we apparently are having internet issues here at the county. I've connected to a mobile hotspot and the wifi to try to, maybe, hopefully that will fix it. So it looks like it's going good now. I will let you know if I see anything, anything happening. So. All right. So I think we can go ahead and, and start the meeting. Again, I apologize.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're running the meeting and not me, because I wouldn't have a clue what to do, so. We are back in session, regular session. We completed public comment, that's correct, Stephanie, nobody raised their hand.
Let me just, if anyone, let me just go through again, if there's anyone who wants to make public comments, you can use the raise your hand function, and I will unmute your microphone, and you can make public comment if you're, if you would like to do that. I'm not seeing anyone who wants to take advantage of that option.
Okay, well, if somebody has been trying to do that and can't do that, then, you know, you need to send an email to the staff or to one of your commissioners, and may not get you worked in this meeting, but we will definitely work on the issue if there are problems with that, because we haven't had anybody take advantage of that option, so I'm curious.
We have not. So I will, if anyone does have a problem, please email me at sgrove@jeffersoncountywv.org, and we will look into that issue, because you're right, we haven't had anyone recent, the first time we did it, we did have a few people who gave public comment, but we haven't had anyone since then.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody, on, back online, and we will move ahead with item number one on our agenda, which is Dr. Reedy from the Jefferson County Health Department. Welcome, Dr. Reedy.
Thank you. So this will be an update on COVID, and of course, you probably don't feel like you need an update, but new change, and we, a month ago, you know, went off the stay-at-home, and a few days before, officially, we were off the stay-at-home, the traffic picked up, and the worry was that as people started interacting more, we'd see more spread of for about three weeks, that was pretty good, including a time period where we stayed on the hotspot designation, and some of the other counties went off. The hotspot designation no longer exists. We are still a high alert county, which we will remain throughout, because we're next to, you know, large populated areas that have it, we're part of the Washington metropolitan area. That's not going to change. Hopefully, the rest of the state will not become a high alert area, and that the virus will, you know, just be occasional cases there. But I don't think we can anticipate that luxury, so we, we can look at what the governor says, we care what the governor says, and we care about the rest of the state. But what's good for the rest of the state may not be adequate for us, just because we have ongoing transmission of people within our community who infect others, but also, we have lots of people going back and forth to Maryland and Virginia. I mean, it's just part of every day, especially in Jefferson County. So we're, we're not going to see this stop suddenly, even places like Prince George's County, which have over a thousand people who have had positive tests, even, you know, per a hundred, per 100,000 people, they've had over a thousand people, almost 2,000 people who have been infected. If 2,000 out of 100,000 have been infected or proven infected, that still means you've got 98% of the population susceptible to it, so we expect ongoing transmission of it until there's a vaccine or some other way to do it. It's gonna be a long time at this rate of growth, until enough of the community is immune by natural mechanisms. So this is our, our new normal, and it's going to be unfortunately different for us than the rest of the state. So the governor, you know, has the advantage of being able to look at the rest of the state and see two counties that still have no cases reported yet. And a lot of the other counties that have had big numbers, it's because of a nursing home outbreak or prison outbreak, but a confined outbreak, not general transmission through the population. The, the two ways we can keep this from spreading are continuing our physical distancing as much as possible. And if the possible is that you really are holed up and not going out, and someone else is doing your shopping, just like during the stay-at-home, that's the best way to do it. Every person that doesn't get infected protects everyone else. And then, if you are around other people, keeping your distance, trying to be around people that are also wearing masks, if you go to a crowd or a store and no one has masks, that's probably not a good place to be. The idea is that my mask protects you from things I may be exhaling, your mask protects me, so if I want my safety, I want to be around people that wear masks. It doesn't have to be a mask, like a surgical mask, it can just be a cloth covering, that could be a bandana, or these, I don't know what you call them, they're things that almost look to me like a turtleneck shirt that you pull up over your face. If anyone knows the proper name, let me know. The, but it's just a covering we did receive from the guard for each of the counties here. Jefferson got 25,000 masks made by Hanes, they're nice little simple cloth masks that you can wear and wash. So we're gonna be through the health department and the emergency operations center, just trying to disperse them to our most vulnerable groups, and among those would be municipal employees, county employees, who have to interact with the public, because you may interact with a lot of, a lot of people, now you're mostly still closed, but there are activities that are needed. If these masks can be made available to have at polling places If these masks can be made available to have at polling places or wherever, your tax offices or wherever you will interact, if people come without a mask, to have some to offer them so that they can at least interact with you and then they can take it home and use it. Masks seem very simple, but they, and if you asked me two, two and a half months ago about the value of them in the general public, I'd say, well, that's not important. And I've changed my view because there is more information. And places like Japan have a very low number of cases, even though they're even closer to China and Korea. And, and they had one of the, the cruise ships with a lot of infections very early. They are, I don't want to say a more disciplined society, but they have a different culture and people are accustomed to respecting distance and, but they are certainly much more densely populated, especially they're big cities, but they wear masks all the time. And, you know, so there is evidence that it makes a difference and it's a pretty simple thing to do. I look at it like a seatbelt, initially there were a lot of people said, I can't wear it, it's confining, it hurts my neck. You know, it's going to trap me in the vehicle and there are all these excuses. The overwhelming majority of people now, the seatbelt is just a habit, you just, you just do. It's a, you rarely hear people whining about it. So our biggest strategy is the, is wearing the masks and the social distancing. The other strategy is trying to find people who have the infection so they can be given stronger advice and, and know that they need to for a time, and usually we're talking 10 or 14 days, they need to be completely isolated from others and those living with them who could get infected also need to quarantine. So the, we're working with the state, we've had two large testing events. And we're going to, we're working with the state to try and have a different way of doing it because those large testing events are hard to do. And we're, you know, maybe going to have it available that people who don't have symptoms that want testing, we can do that regularly through regular testing centers and then areas that we're especially concerned about vulnerable groups that we will have special smaller scale things that we can test about, you know, a population that we're worried about. Just like the nursing homes got tested, childcare workers, the eastern regional jail got tested this week. I don't have any results on that yet, but those are special groups that we'd want to identify it. In Randolph County, you know, so Elkins area, the Huttonsville Correctional Center had someone identified as positive and they had over a hundred staff and inmates who tested positive. Fortunately, most of them had very few or no symptoms. They did not find so far general community spread, but their numbers went from a handful to, you know, quite a lot in a few days. And so we're going to continue to look at areas of concern. People that work in areas and are concerned, you know, we're going to try and figure out ways, even if they have minimal symptoms, that we can test them periodically. We know that up to half of the people with the infection don't even know they have it because they feel fine or, or what they feel is stuff that you'd normally go to work with every day, say I have a little headache today or I had a little cough or my sinuses are bothering, but it's the pollen. So it's a, you know, this testing is important to get another way of figuring out. With the increased cases the last week or so, the hospitals filling back up and get more ICU patients. The, the state website incorrectly says that we've had one death of Jefferson County, we have had two, but we're trying to get that corrected, but that's still pretty good. Part of the reason we've done well is that our nursing homes have not had outbreaks. But as we have increased numbers of community members with the virus, the chance of infecting somebody who works in a nursing home increases just by chance. So in your other activities, if you can continue to keep the distancing, whether it's church or sports or all of those things, trying to figure out the biology, not just, the law pretty much allows all this stuff again, but the, the biology hasn't changed and we do not want a big surge. Berkeley Medical Center, so that when people are identified with COVID need to be hospitalized, they go from Jefferson to Berkeley. And Berkeley Medical Center usually has about 20 ICU beds and occasionally they're full, but they, they have a surge plan that they can increase to almost 50 ICU beds. And, and they still take that very seriously because it would not take long for a big outbreak to suddenly fill the ICU and they have capacity for a lot of ventilators. But the, when someone's on a ventilator with this, they could be on it for three weeks before they get well enough. So it's not like you suddenly have 20 people on it. If you add one or two a day, you can suddenly, you know, meet that capacity, which is what we saw in New York City. And there's no reason we couldn't be that way if we get too lax. What, what helped us not be New York City and help most of the nation is, is this social distancing and the, the stopping the congregation. I want it to be over also. You know, I want to get back to activities, I want to go lay on the beach with the crowd and walk on the boardwalk, but that's going to be a while. So I'm happy for any questions.
Dr. Reedy, this is Cassie Nolan, I do have a couple of questions for you and thank you for being with us this morning. I think a lot of people are interested in this, I'm hearing from people in the community who have big concerns and some of those concerns include, for example, you mentioned a death that was, at least one death that was due to COVID, but hasn't been, hasn't been counted as a death from COVID. Do you think it's possible or likely that there have been more than has been, that has been included in those numbers and maybe they're being counted as maybe pneumonia or something like that? Could that, is that likely to happen?
There, there could be a few, but we're aware of people who are hospitalized with respiratory illnesses and they're, they've been for more than two months, we've been testing them quite carefully and if it's negative, we're still concerned, we retest them because it could be it didn't show up and two days later there's enough to show up. So there were, everybody's, what we call a high index of suspicion is we're really assuming it's that until proven otherwise. There could be some people without it, there definitely can be people with minor illnesses. We have had people who have died who hadn't been tested, we can do a swab on a corpse just instead of a full autopsy, you can, you can test them for, for the virus if you have that suspicion. And that occasionally is done if we, if we have a reason to think that's what could have happened. But we're not seeing disproportionate numbers of deaths due to respiratory illnesses, you know, better than the flu season. But the, but that's because the numbers have been kept relatively low. We always have people on ventilators in the, in the ICU. But a month or so ago, we had a surge and we had, I think they had up to five people at one time on ventilators with COVID. Looking at, so we have patients went up on ventilators who could be in Frederick, Maryland or Winchester or Merrittus, not just here in the eastern panhandle. And, you know, we, there have probably been 15 or 20 people overall, eastern panhandle residents who have been on ventilators. Many, you know, most people have gotten better from it. Many of them are disabled for a good while, just like anybody that's sick enough to be on a ventilator. But we're probably not missing, so this person we knew about who died and isn't reported at the state level yet, we were aware of them the whole time when they were in the hospital, it's just some little, I don't know quite why and it's, and I, but most of the data, because we tracked pretty carefully what's showing up on their website and what we're aware of and there's often a day or two delay because they want to verify it and get it through their stuff. But I would not say that there's a discrepancy other than just a slight lag time of, of one case showing up one place or another. Sometimes they know of a person infected before we do because they get a lab result from out of state lab that we don't know because the person got their care elsewhere. But, but then we immediately get them in our system and we're calling and talking to the patient or their families.
Okay. And can you tell me, can you tell me where the numbers come from that are posted on the health department's website? Are they, how, how are they, how are they counted and where do they come from?
At the local health department website?
Yes.
Right. So they should be the numbers we've, and I'd have to actually ask Caitlin exactly. The, they are cases that have been identified as being residents of this county who have tested positive that we have in our database, now it's a state database, but the, sometimes we know that because, because our staff, which includes some national guardsmen and some school nurses who are helping, that we know that we have contacted the person, we've looked at the laboratory result and we know, yes, this is indeed a case. So we verified it at our level, so it may show up as us verifying it before the state, before the state does. In Berkeley, I think we made the decision yesterday to not keep putting up separate information just because the state and our numbers are almost the same and just maintaining a separate thing. It, it's not really value added at this point. It was initially when you had a very small number of cases. But now if you've got 200 cases and you're off by one or two, it doesn't make much difference. I think for the, the death rate, we, you know, if there's a discrepancy, it's helpful. But the, but it's, it should not be much different than what the state is reporting.
Well, I have concerns over people just not listening and not practicing the, the social distancing and wearing masks and, you know, that affects all of us and I have big concerns about that. And I've had, I've heard from a lot of folks that also have those concerns. So, you know, I don't know what, other than not, not patronizing the stores that may have relaxed guidelines. I'm not sure what else we could do to, to prevent the spread. So, and another concern that I've had is that there are folks that are concerned that some churches have never closed down. They continue to, they've continued to hold services with, inside the church. And so the folks that I've heard from are also concerned that the church could be a source of spread. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that. But, you know, I'm really concerned about this because it's just, it's, it's as though, once the, once the restrictions were lifted a little bit, it's like people came out of the woodwork and I don't blame them, but they don't seem to be concerned about the spread of this or the more vulnerable and they don't seem to be practicing any of the measures that have been in place to be able to prevent the spread or at least slow it down.
Share the same concerns and, you know, this becomes, you know, how do you get a population to decide what's responsible things to do in a, in a community? And how do you get people to do it? We've got a different culture than Japan, for example, and we have to work within our culture. I agree that not patronizing, but beyond that would be publicizing businesses that are clearly flaunting it. Agencies publicizing it is a problem, so if the health department had a, a rating system of a, this, this store, none of their people are wearing masks, I mean, you can imagine the, the, the message would get lost in the noise about it. There are, you know, rating systems for restaurants and other things, TripAdvisor and Zag, Zagat and, you know, others that, having something like that, that some group simply posted ratings, you know, that, you know, internet, Facebook, you know, these are, these are the places as of June 4th, this is the rating of the ratings we've received in the last, you know, four days for, say, you know, this food store. And you could have things like employees wearing face masks, you know, store's not too crowded, checkout lines are too long or not, you could rate them on your one to five stars. And that way you could share information. And I certainly rely on that when I'm looking at stuff I buy off Amazon, I say, oh, they got a lot of number ones, I want the ones with more number fives. And the, but there is ways to share information and people are doing it, unfortunately, in an unfriendly manner many times, which doesn't help because confrontation is not, you know, isn't going to get people to do it. With regard to the churches, it's really any meeting organization and there have been, there were some case transmissions through a church that continued to do it, that has ended. The church has realized the, the reality of the, the physical virus. That it's there and it is a non-denominational virus, you know, doesn't care, it's happy to infect all of us. And, but it's also goes to little league, so there are ball, you know, there are teams getting together and practicing and their pictures being taken. I've got one that was sent to me of some, you know, ball team that's meeting ahead of when it's approved by the governor and they're, you know, clustered together and it's being circulated and people giving it the thumbs up, this is a great thing. And, you know, I, I think that's a bad idea, but how you can get the adults to be more responsible and whether the leagues can say, if you do this, you're not going to be part of our league this season, I, I don't know. But it's, this is real and people are going to bring it home and they're going to infect somebody. And then you say, well, it's just young people, they're going to be okay. But the pictures from New York of these children with the bad inflammatory syndrome say, yeah, okay. So if only, you know, one or two kids in our county get that, well, that's one or two kids too many because that's a bad disease. So, so no one can take this lightly. But we need to work together with, with the government and the population. I do believe the overwhelming majority of the population really wants to be safe. And we just need to keep the messaging that no, it's not over. It's still, in our counties, 99% of us at least are still susceptible to getting this virus. And if it's widespread and we're putting ourselves in harm's way, we're going to catch it.
Dr. Reedy?
Any more questions?
This is Ralph Florenzetti. What's the schedule for future testing? I know, will a tent still be operating over in Berkeley? Will the National Guard be coming back in or will the health department start doing testing?
So the, the tent is still working in Berkeley. Shenandoah Community Health also has a testing site. The, and they may be able to open to be testing more than just the regular patients. That hasn't yet occurred, was on a conference call yesterday with people at the state level, really just talking about the eastern panhandle because their interactions with us are completely different than their interactions with the rest of the state. They, they realize it and they are spending a lot of their energy trying to deal with me, which takes a lot of energy. The, because they realize that we're the ones that are groundbreaking in a lot of this and we have been since we had the first case. So we're probably going to do more targeted testing rather than the big, not that the big weekend type things aren't going to happen with the guard, but we'll probably be working with the guard to have, let, let's just say. let's just say if we were concerned and we are concerned about the Hispanic community, that maybe we need to reach out to some of the church groups who have a large Hispanic population in their congregation and offer it through, through those venues. And home health workers, maybe we need to figure out how we get some of them tested instead of just anyone randomly. But then also people who, just like any other infectious disease, we may, we may think we're at high risk, but not really want to tell someone why we think we're at high risk. If some people say, I don't have symptoms, but I'm worried I may have it. In this case, with half of the people who are infected not knowing they have it, it's legitimate. So we will probably be figuring out a way with the state and the National Guard to have fairly routine availability of some testing for people with no symptoms. The trouble is if you have no symptoms, the insurances may not cover it. But having the free testing through the state done locally, maybe through our regular testing sites. I would like to get a test center, even if it's one day, one hour, five or six days a week in Jefferson County so people can go through. And I'm going to be continuing to talk with both hospital systems, WVU and the Valley Health. The, I know that the Med Express in Martinsburg also does testing. But we need that in Jefferson. And, and Morgan County also, they do not have a test site. But Jefferson's certainly big enough that we should be able to do it. And that may be something we do through the health department. We have relatively small numbers of staff, but that's something we're looking at trying to do because this is, we're trying to reopen our other activities such as childhood immunization because we don't want kids dying from, you know, streptococcal pneumonia and stuff like that either.
Are there, anyone else have questions for Dr. Reedy?
Commissioner Tab?
Yes.
We have had, there's one attendee. There's a question function and you can write questions and she's written many questions. I don't know if you wanted to allow questions from the, from the public or not. It's Rhonda Lehman. Or I could take, I think I have the ability to see her written questions and maybe pass them on to Dr. Reedy if you would have time to look at them. But I didn't know if you wanted to. Usually don't allow the attendees to ask questions.
If you want to look at one or two of them and ask me, I can try and answer.
Yeah, if we can keep it short and simple, that'll be fine. And then maybe if more detail is needed, then they can communicate by email or some other manner.
I think.
Quick thing, Stephanie. Commissioner Tab, if we're going to allow questions, let's make sure we allow all questions. I know we had a problem with that a few meetings back, so.
Well.
Yeah, that's what I was going to raise. If we let one or two, we have to let everybody.
Okay, so you bring up a good point. Fellow commissioners, how do you feel about this?
Well, I, I think it's important enough that we take the time to do this. I realize that we are on a time schedule and I really appreciate Dr. Reedy's willingness to entertain these questions. So I do think this is important and here, but, but I'm just one person.
Yeah. If you would like another time, we could set up a town hall meeting to do more of that. If you want that other than this commission meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
I, I do too.
Yeah, I like that. Thank you.
Yes. So I think that's, it seems from what everybody has said, that that would be a good approach. And if you disagree, please speak up because I can't see all of your faces. So, and then we can limit it just to this, this topic is, you know, as many, there's lots of facets to it. But we realize too, Dr. Reedy's time is valuable. So if we could set up that town hall with Dr. Reedy, I think that'd be awesome.
Okay.
I don't have any, I don't have any problem with that as long as it's done fairly soon. It's
Right.
Two weeks down the line, it'd be too late.
Right. I agree.
I, I suggest maybe outside work hours. I don't know what the county residents' work schedules are like, but we want the most people to be able to attend if we're doing it. How are you going to do it? I guess go to a meeting or, I mean, people can be accommodated, I guess.
301.
Yeah. Actually, we have, for, for attendees, we can have up to 501. On this format, we also have the go to meeting format, which might be better for our town hall because this format allows us to prevent the public from just chiming in like during your deliberations. But if we're going to have a town hall format, we can use go to meeting and it's much more, it allows the public to engage a little bit more. So I can, I have either format that I can use. I can, we can use the go to webinar or we can use the go to meeting.
That's a go to meeting. If you think that's a better format, Stephanie, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, fine with me too. Hey Stephanie, quick thing too. I don't know how many people would be attending per se, hopefully more than less. I don't know if, it may be hard to organize something like that, maybe have a pre-signup list or something to try to address the questions systematically or?
Yeah, so that, and that is, that is one of the downfalls of go to meeting is that you can just like basically jump in, I think. Unless there's another way to control it and I can discuss that with Russ. So yeah, maybe, I'll figure it out. What, what the best format is. But we do like, so if we have attendees here, so on the go to webinar and you can't see, I'm an organizer, so you cannot see my screen. But it allows me to unmute people. So if we use the go to webinar format, they can, and that's how I knew Ms. Lehman had questions because I saw the question mark next to her name. So if they use the raise your hand or question mark function, then I can just go down the list and unmute their mic one at a time and they can ask the questions of Dr. Reedy. And then that way it's not everybody just chiming in all at once.
Yeah, it was best for you.
But you do have, go ahead.
That makes, I was just going to say that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah.
Tomorrow morning, we have the Jefferson County Board of Health meeting, which is going to be on Zoom. So we do have a Zoom account, but we can also discuss this. You know, obviously further at their, at their meeting. This way, and, and then if Rhonda or others want to reach out, you know, I can, I'll get with Stephanie Grove and, you know, I can answer those specific questions. So you don't have to wait for a meeting. Okay?
All right. Is everybody agreeable with this plan of action?
Yes, I am.
I'm with me. Yeah, it sounds good.
All right. Yep. I'm, I'm glad we had this discussion. I think this will, will be very good, the town hall meeting concept. And thank you, Dr. Reedy, for your availability because I know your time is, is precious.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next agenda item. Ms. Angie Banks, the assessor.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Yep.
Okay, I have one exoneration. It is in the 2019 Personal Property Book, Shepherdstown District. Taxpayer reported he did not own the 2017 Ford Focus, July 1st of 2018. Assessed value 6,200. Tax amount for the full year is $143.78. Taxpayer is Anthony Gentry, ticket number 316194.
All right, I move, we approve the exoneration. Ticket number 316194 as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to prove the exoneration as presented. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have anything else for us, Angie?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Have a good day.
You too.
All right. Well, I have, it's labeled Lynn Goodwin, but I believe we have Mr. McLaughlin on the, on the screen. Are you ready now for agenda item number three?
Yes, and I think Lynn may be in the background as well. So what I don't, I'm sure she can.
Okay.
Thanks for having us. You know, it's been about 12 months since we've had our full-time executive director at the JCD. And mentioning Lynn, Lynn's done a great job as an interim. And we've actually moved the JCD forward in, in a bunch of ways in the last 12 months. So I'm thankful to the commissioners for appointing new members for us. And we've, I think, coalesced into a pretty decent group. So we're trying to move forward, but one of the big steps in doing so is to get a full-time executive director. So we engaged a search firm and started a search about six months ago involving community members as well as, I think you guys got an opportunity to speak or at least some of you did and, and many other people in the community. So we established a salary range with that group. They're a specialized group that does a fair amount of executive director and, and other position recruitment in the economic development world. And so we went out for candidates. The firm narrowed the group of candidates down to six for us. Six, we did Zoom interviews of all of them. We narrowed that down to a smaller group and did some additional interviews there. And then invited a single candidate here at the, at the vote of the, the JCD board and are ready to recommend the hiring of that single candidate. So we came in inside of the salary range that the search firm recommended. And I believe the request has been made to you for the salary amount. So we're here to recommend, I believe you've got the, the CV of the candidate in front of you. Be happy to answer what I can about, about that.
Well, I can, I can say that it was a, you know, it has been a lengthy process. And I have to commend the board for their diligence and their volunteering to, on this board. There've been a lot of meetings and this just added another level of, of meetings and, and time on the part of the volunteers. So I think they've done a yeoman's job of being able to narrow this down to the, to the candidate that is being requested.
We're excited about this candidate. It's a person with West Virginia roots and a strong desire to be in West Virginia currently in another state, but looking forward to coming back. Kind of cut, cut his teeth in West Virginia economic development and then moved along to some other roles outside of the state. So looking forward to getting him back. He did make a visit here, has already got some plans to get things rolling. But we, we bring to you the financial piece of this since that's where the salary dollars currently come from. I will say before we get too far though, that we, we would hope to get to the point where we don't have to ask you for the salary for this role. We made that very clear during the interview process. And among the early items on the desire list of the candidate coming in is finding ways to get revenue streams coming into the JCD that don't require us to come to you for our financial support. We certainly look for the guidance, but we love not to draw from the tax dollars if we can find a way to support it on our end.
Well, with that being said, what, I do not have the salary being offered.
Okay, the request is for $95,000, which came in right in the middle of the recommended range from the search firm. So that's the request.
Okay, and you have that within your budget, your current budget?
With our request budget, I should say this, the start date would be July 6th. So it'd be after the beginning of fiscal year. So the request fulfills what it is that we put into the 2021 budget request.
Okay, I see. Thank you for that clarification.
Well, this is Ralph. I'm probably going to be a naysayer for, at least for a short period. $95,000, maybe a reasonable salary for the person. And I've seen his CV, he seems to be qualified. I'm a little concerned that I'm, I'm waiting for Congress to work out the money they're going to give to local communities. They seem to be arguing over it. I don't know if we'll ever get it. I think the track is starting, the casino's starting up Friday. I hope it all goes well. I, I'm just a little concerned. This is not a medical or public service type position. And I know we're going to be talking about budget for the next year and probably going to be a lot of modifications to it. So I'm a little concerned about doing it today.
Understandable on the, the salary number. Talking with the search firm, just living this for the last while from my perspective, I think we're actually quite lucky to get someone at that number. I know that's a big number, but given the track record for the county over the last two years and the things that the JCD has been involved in, we were pleased to get the number of candidates we got. But I don't think we were surprised at the salary demands made by the candidates coming in. I don't know if Commissioner Nolan wants to weigh in on the part that we, we talked about at JCD or not.
Yeah, I know that, you know, this is, this is something that we have been working on. It's been over a year now since we've had a, a director at the JCD. And I think that I certainly appreciate and understand the concerns. It is within the budget. And that has been presented to the JCD and understand we will have to revisit that probably at some point in time. And so I certainly would hate to, to lose the candidate that we've spent such a long time trying to, trying to attract. And I'm as concerned about the budget as everyone else is, but I think this is very important. I think, I know that the JCD has been active in working with the small businesses and trying to, trying to help them get through this COVID and their closures as much as possible and as much as they can do. So I would certainly hate to see us lose this candidate and have to start the process again. That's what it would boil down to. I'm concerned about that.
Do you have any comments from Josh or Caleb?
Yeah, just a quick thing. So I, there's probably no commissioner more concerned about a budget or financial numbers than I. But I'm going to have to disagree with Ralph a little bit here. And I hate to say I'd agree with Patsy. But here's the thing, I honestly, when I heard that salary, I thought it was a little low considering the circumstances. I mean, this individual is not just transitioning into a role here. They're going to be expected to rebuild this entire JCD and change it for the better. That's a serious undertaking. And at that salary, I think it's more than justified. I mean, I think that salary is a very good deal and I would hate to lose the individual. Again, I understand the budget has some serious concerns going forward, but we could be in the hole for a lot more money holding off, in my opinion.
Caleb, do you have any thoughts you want to share?
Yeah, it's, I don't want to put too much pressure on the candidate, but their, their job is going to be to increase our tax revenue, to get more for our first responders, for everybody that's going around to help our budget issues. No, not to put too much pressure on them before they even start, you know?
And I just wanted to ask Michelle, our financial director, if she's available. If, what her thoughts are, just her input on our flexibility within our current budget constraints. If she's available or no? We can't hear you, Steph.
Oh, Stephanie, yep.
Stephanie, we can't hear you. No, no, well. Is, is everyone comfortable moving forward with a vote on this issue? If we can't, even if we can't get input from Michelle on our financials?
Well, I am because it has been included as a part of the budget. So that's where I am.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. All right, well, I'm, I'm okay.
Is, I just want to know like next year, where it would come from, kind of thing. So we can hear that like next meeting, so that's fine with me.
Okay. Well, and, and I'm the same way. I know we have an emergency fund if it comes to that, and don't want to use it. But I know we have some flexibility, not saying we're going to be rolling in dollars. But, okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve the employment of the candidate to be named as the executive director for the Jefferson County Development Authority effective July 6, 2020, at a salary of $95,000.
I thought we had to name the candidate.
The, there are, I don't know that we have to name the candidate. Stephanie, do you know? I mean, it's for... The reason is because, and I'll tell you, that the Development Authority wants to put out the press release about this. They don't want the, they don't want it to come from the county commission.
I see, I see.
And Frank, I don't know that it's about the person. I think it's about the salary at this point. So if anyone disagrees with me, you know, please voice your opinions. But, but the candidate, the, the name of the candidate will be released later on today after this is approved by the Development Authority.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
They probably have to get his final agreement that he's taking the job.
Yeah, and I, I think that's true. So I don't know that you want to release the name if that is still in transition. What you could do is at the next meeting, you could just affirm, you know, the person and, and name him at that time. And that gives everybody the opportunity to have the Development Authority make the announcement if, if the person accepts a position. And then you, you can name him. But what you're doing is you're approving a position right now.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were following proper procedure. So the motion is on the floor, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. So everybody, go ahead, Ralph. Were you going to say something?
No, I'm just going to vote.
Okay. So the motion is to the, improve the employment of an executive director for the J C D A effective July 6, 2020, at a salary at $95,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we had already discussed, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay.
Let me finish this vote. All right, I'm going to, we've voted...
I'm not sure if she could hear what we were saying while we were doing what we were doing.
Right.
No.
Well, the motion is on the floor. We, I believe I have four ayes. And I'm asking for anyone that's opposed to the motion. Is there anyone opposed?
I'm opposed for the reasons I gave.
Yes, okay, thank you. So the motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Neil.
Yes.
I will say, thank you, guys. I will say, he has accepted the role, having given his notice. He'll approve today. So that was the reason we were holding off. As, as Commissioner Nolan said, we will make this press release this afternoon and can certainly talk more about this at your next meeting if you like. But that was the reason we were holding off. He hadn't given notice to his current salary.
Okay, that, that makes perfect sense to me. And I think somebody needs to mute their mic. I hear a lot of background. Thank you for your, your meeting with us in this somewhat cumbersome manner today. Have a good day. All right. All righty. Moving on to agenda night of item number four with Roger. Is Roger available?
Yeah, there's still a lot of feedback. I just think that there, all mics need to be muted except the person, the person's... Okay, thank you.
Stephanie, if you can hear me, we're waiting for Roger to come on.
I think Becky is doing that, and I've just unmuted her. Becky, can you hear me? Becky, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Stephanie.
Okay, good, thank you. Sorry. Becky says she's on, it says she's unmuted, but I don't hear her. Becky?
Yeah, I don't see her.
Yeah, she's on the attendee list.
Okay.
Um, Becky, can you hear us? Okay, well, she's probably calling in. Um, all right, let me, can, can we go on to the, to Nathan's? And then I'll try and see what's, what's, where she is.
Okay, yeah, I was going to suggest that, too. So, and if, you know, she was in town, maybe she could join you or use a phone there locally. All right, we are moving on to, we have a lot of background noise again. Number five, from Nathan.
Yes, unfortunately, I'm not going to take a lot of time because I'm going to go ahead and waive everything on my list again. Some of those things on my list, I, I leave on there because they're ongoing issues. And I never know, we're waiting on some other entity, like some court or something, to, to rule or give us more information. And I never know whether or not that ruling would come when it's too late to put it on the agenda. So I leave it on there just so that when the ruling does come, I'll be able to tell you about it. But there's nothing that pressing. If you want me to kill time, I mean, I could, I could just talk.
We love you, nation, but we don't need you to kill time for us, so.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chad, this is Becky. I'm here at Stephanie's office now. I'm sorry, we were having technical difficulty.
That's okay, seems like we all are to some degree today. You can go, go ahead with your item.
Okay, well, we have two partial bond releases. The first one that we have is for I L A Properties for the Quail Ridge subdivision, section two, phase three, lots 129 through 159. We're asking that you release $869,237 from their existing letter of credit.
Well, I move that we authorize a partial release of irrevocable letter of credit, 796-2921, with Summit Community Bank, in the amount of $869,237 for I L A Properties, Inc., Quail Ridge subdivision, section two, phase three, lots 129 through 159, file zero S 55.
Okay, the motion is before us. Do we have any questions? All those in favor of authorizing the partial release for the irrevocable letter of credit, number 796-2921? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm getting a lot of feedback on when I speak, and I don't know what that issue is. But we'll move on to the next one. Becky?
The next partial release is for the Roderick Plains LLC. It's for the Aspen Green subdivision, phase two. And we are asking that $439,808 be released from their performance bond.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I authorize a partial release of performance bond number S N N 4002856 with Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company in the amount of $439,808 for Roderick Plains LLC, Aspen Green subdivision, phase 11A, file number 14-01.
Second.
Okay, the motion is before us. Do we have any questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving the partial release of the performance bond number S N N 4002856? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Ms. Becky.
Thank you, folks.
All right, does anyone need to take a break? We'll move on to item number six under new business. And Mr. Compton, this was, you put this on the agenda. Can you tell me what you're looking at?
So I mean, I don't look at this being a long, drawn-out conversation, but you never know. So I guess Charlestown Council, their Article 147, the C T U B composition and everything that's entailed with C T U B as far as electing members and so forth, I guess they redid that ordinance. And I think the county commission, Ranson, were supposed to have the ability to comment. I'm just trying to figure out where the disconnect was, if we know why we did not have that discussion at the county commission to provide comments. And that's basically where I'm at. They've already passed the second reading, so, and we're pretty late in the game here. I don't sit on that board anymore. I'm just trying to figure out if there was any correspondence from Charlestown, the C T U B or council to the county? Or was something lost, or was it not, did it not happen? I just want to figure out why we, as the county commission, weren't able to provide feedback or comment.
Okay. I don't have a clue. You know, it's possible, I was sent an email, and I didn't pick up on what was being at... I never saw, to my knowledge, I never saw anything about this. But it's possible I may have missed an email. But I wouldn't think just sending it to the president of the commission by emails proper notice.
So I talked to the city manager yesterday, and they did not send any formal notice. They don't have to. They just followed their ordinance rules, which would be noticed in the agenda. So they did not send anything formally to us. Our representative, Ms. Milliron, I believe, objected to the change and didn't make public comment. But I, to my knowledge, she did not contact us. We didn't receive anything. So I talked to Mr. Hennessy yesterday, and he said we would not have received anything formally from them, that it was just through their own agenda notification process.
Okay. All righty.
And let me just say that I'm not surprised.
No, I mean, what I understand, Ranson did make comment, though. I, I believe they provided input. I don't know if it was collectively through their council or their mayor, but their mayor sits on that board. So, I mean, I just have a real problem with, with them saying, oh, we just assumed you saw that or whatnot. So unfortunately, we're at the end of the process here. I don't think the changes that occurred were substantial. I think Jessica sent that out to commissioners, the updates, the red line stuff. I'm sure they saw that. There were some minor adjustments. I think one of them was if the council didn't feel Ranson or the county commission provided adequate choices, they could circumvent them and put their own individual in there that best was qualified in their eyes to represent the respective body. So that, that in itself seems to be a substantial change. This is why I would have liked to provide some sort of comment rather than Charlestown assuming the county, I mean, it would be a common courtesy to let us know. That's where I'm at. I mean, it's unfortunate that's what occurred. I just, going forward, I would expect Charlestown, Ranson, Shepherdstown, et cetera, to reach out to us for certain types of things like this.
Yeah, I agree with you, Josh, and that certainly should have happened.
We, we do have a county representative on that board that is appointed by us as well.
Well, why, why don't we draft a letter? Have Stephanie draft a letter and say, in future, anything concerning C T U B, we would like, you know, as far as an ordinance change that involves representation and so forth, we, we'd like to know about it.
I agree. And our county rep, Ms. Milliron, is a very detail-oriented individual. And this is how this was brought to my attention, because she was under the assumption that the county commission had been contacted. I don't know if that was through correspondence or other types of communication. But if she thought otherwise, she never would have said a thing.
Yeah.
So I have a strong inclination that she thought the contact was made. So then she came to me, asking me, why do we, why we didn't provide comments? Then I went to everybody else, and like, wow, we never even heard about this, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it was not provided. According to the, the conversation that I had with the city manager, they didn't provide any formal notification to us. Because I called and asked how they were sending that notice. You know, if they were sending it to the president, did they send it to me? You know, trying to figure out if, if we had missed it in the mail or something. And then he indicated that they had not provided any formal notice, that their notification requirements for their ordinance were, you know, to amend an ordinance was followed, but they didn't send any notification to us. So we didn't receive anything, like any formal notice, other than what was in there, you know, if we had looked at their agenda.
Well, it might be in their ordinance, and they may have followed their ordinance correctly. But certainly, common courtesy should dictate that we would, should have been notified. And that letter, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's just Ralph. I agree, and I agree the letter should be written. And I, I think it should be underlined and read.
Well, and also perhaps bring to their attention that it would be prudent to amend their notification ordinance since, you know, they took in the PSD customers that the commission rep is representing that are, you know, outside of the municipal boundaries. So we can throw that in there, too.
And I'm sure the city of Ranson's residents would like their council to chime in, too, not just specifically their individual mayor.
Right. Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we instruct the county administrator to send a letter to the city of Charlestown Council, sternly recommending they provide us heads-up on any types of ordinance changes that may or may not affect county residents or county taxpayers.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? The motion is before us, is to contact C T U B and make, make sure that we're included on the public notification process when they're amending their ordinances.
Commissioner Chad, I think it would be the city council.
Okay, all right, you're right. It's C T U B, but it all has to be approved through this council, yes.
Yeah, and affect ordinances that, and ordinances that affect county residents, I think.
Yes.
One.
Yeah.
All right. So everybody clear on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Agenda item number seven. Mr. Compton, you want to take this on?
Okay, so I've just been pondering ways we could provide some relief. I mean, these are not big dollar numbers here. I know late fees start in October. Seeing how a lot of businesses and residents have faced some serious financial issues the past few months, I, I'm looking at what other jurisdictions are doing to try to help those establishments and county residents. We don't have the ability to do much more as far as some of the other areas. So I think this is just like a low-hanging fruit thing. I don't want it to affect our budget. But I would, I have a strong inclination that a two-month delay in, of late fees isn't going to cause a big deal. So I'm proposing we extend and abate any sort of ambulance fee, late fees, until the end of the year versus them starting in October.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll second it. I think it's a good idea.
All right, well, I'll second it. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Can I just ask for one word add, or without interest, just to make sure that that's...
Any and all late fees or interest on the original ambulance fee payments for businesses or county residents.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Are we extending the date that the late fee is added, or are we abating the late fee?
We're extending the date, so they wouldn't start October, they would now start the first of the year.
Okay, and that would be for the new bills that are going out in July? Is that, am I understanding that correctly, not for the current?
Yeah, that's what I would think, yes.
Okay.
So, the motion is to waive our late fees. It will not be implemented until January of 2021 for the billings that'll go out, the ambulance fee billings that will go out on July, in July.
I think it should say, extend the late fee.
Okay.
The first late fee deadline to July 1, 2020.
In January.
Okay.
January, January 1, 2020. And then...
So the motion is to extend, now I'm getting mixed up, extend late fees, they will not be incurred until July 1, 2021.
January 1, 21.
Yes, January 1, 2021 for the July 2020 ambulance fee invoices.
Let's get off this agenda item quick.
Yeah, okay.
The internet has been all this populated today.
All right, everybody clear on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion is unanimous, and thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Compton. I think it's a very good idea, and hopefully will help everybody get through the Christmas season, too.
We could have done more, but...
Right, I understand. We're moving on to county administrator reports. Stephanie?
Um, I left my agenda in my office, because I came over in Sandy's office, because hers was working.
Okay.
So, is the first thing the jail cells?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I did hear back from, from Mr. Burke, and he researched both the museum, where they're being donated, and the cells themselves, and actually, he really did a lot of work on this, and Mr., I just have to say, Mr. Burke is a really great volunteer for our county. It's hard to forget sometimes that he actually doesn't work for the county. So he recommended donating one full jail cell to the museum. He said that the museum seems to be, or is a reputable operation. So his recommendation was to donate one full cell. We still have other cells here, and then he sent, they have to be, they have to be put together again, so he sent the diagram to put it back together as well. But he did recommend we either donate or loan, you could do a long-term loan as well, and I have both of the paperwork from, from the museum for either a donation or a loan, but his recommendation was to get, was to donate or loan at least one.
Well, I don't have a problem with donating one, because I have some experience in donating old files to the state archives, and they just keep them, we never get them back, so. I don't have a problem donating it, because I see that there are quite a few in storage, and, and as long as Jefferson County, and of course, I would imagine it would be recognized for the donation, I think that that would be nice.
You want to make an official, and I can't remember the details of what was proposed to, are they, if we donate, we're not transporting, correct? I don't see that as part of the donation.
That's a good point. Well, that would have to be stipulation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have to pick it up.
They were donating it, but we're not going to deliver it to you.
Right, right.
Okay, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Paying the commission's pardon, could I give you some information on that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lutz, this, I, what do you mean inform, well, how does everybody feel? Do we want to let Mr. Lutz enter the conversation?
Well, the only question I would have is, would it change our minds in the information that Dan, would it change the minds of, I mean, are you, is there a reason for us not to? And if you're going to explain that, then I wouldn't have a problem with him voicing his opinion.
No, I'm not, not going to oppose it.
Okay, then I don't see the point in really allowing him to speak to it. I'm sorry, Dan, but it's, it's, it's not something that we normally do. Then we, for us, and we have to do it for everyone.
Who is the president of the commission, running the show?
Point of order. I mean, can we continue business as usual? I mean, we're not taking public comment right now.
Okay.
This is not public comment. I asked to be on the, to address the issue.
Excuse me, Mr. Lutz, we are going to continue. We have, let's see, Patsy, have you made the motion?
Yes, I did move that we donate one old jail cell to the West Virginia Mine Wars Museum with the understanding that it will have to be, that we will not deliver it. They will have to make arrangements to pick it up and transport it.
I'll second that motion. Okay. So we have before us the motion to, excuse me, donate to the West Virginia Mine Wars Museum one old jail cell, and transportation is not our responsibility. Any more questions or discussion from commissioners?
Is there a set period of time here? I'm trying to look through this stuff, I don't see anything. Or is this just in perpetuity until otherwise voted on, or?
Well, my intention was that it be donated, and so that would be just for perpetuity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, here's the issue, I mean, if we redo the county complex, are we going to want to use these things somewhere? I'll mute Patsy.
I hope we'll never need them again.
What's that?
We have more of them, so there's more than one.
How many do we have?
There's a bunch.
I think there's five cells altogether, so.
Looks like it.
And I don't think they would meet today's standards of humane incarceration.
I'm not saying use them for that, Jane, but...
Okay, well, I didn't know where you were going with it, so, you know, I'm just curious.
Aesthetic look.
Our plan was to have them, like, open our, when we did the, when we redid the old jail, our plan was to have a museum in that building to, to kind of commemorate the old jail, and we were going to use some of the cells in there, but we have never done that, so, but there are cells left over, so we're only donating one, and I think there are five total.
All right, thanks.
Okay. The motions before us. Everybody ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't know if I heard everyone. Opposed?
No.
Okay, I can't tell who said no.
I said no, Janice, it's Josh.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just, just for the record. So the motion carries four to one. Let's see. Oh, the other thing listed under county administrator report is update on any issues related to COVID-19. Stephanie, you need to unmute.
The last time we had met, we talked about closing the courthouse on election night. We've been working with IT to livestream that, and they can do that. There are other counties, including Berkeley County, I don't think that they're going to allow people inside their courthouse. There was something that went around on the clerk's listserv about who was opening their courthouse, and there are several counties who are not opening their courthouse to the public. I will say that I personally have attended election night at the courthouse, and I got the results faster from our website than they were posted at the courthouse. So, and there were times when I had people gathered around me asking me how I got that, and it was, I showed them on my phone where it was on the website. So they do always post to the website first, and then they post them in the courthouse. So, we will livestream that, so people can watch it, but if, I think there are other counties closing the courthouse, it is a really confined space in there, and it's really tight on election night for people inside the courthouse. Again, that's your decision. I just wanted to give you some background that the website is faster than the actual, like, in-person results. They always post them to the website first. So that's the last remaining issue, is whether or not we're going to have the courthouse open on election night. Of course, you, because it is your election, any county commissioner will be able to go to the courthouse during the election.
I don't have a problem with closing it, and my only concern is the transparency of the process, and I think since it can be livestreamed and we can see what's going on inside, I think that's the most important thing. But I don't have a problem with not opening it to the public, so, that, that my only concern, like I said, was the transparency of the process.
Also, here's, here's the thing, I mean, as far as voting, I mean, folks can go in their courthouse, whether without a mask currently, I mean, how would that be any different?
Well, Josh, if you've been there, been there on election night, it's standing, yeah, standing room only in the hallway, so who are you going to let come in, and who are you going to keep out, as far as the public?
I mean, here's my thing, we, honestly, I think the individual should be able to make that decision. If they think there's a risk, they're not going to go to the courthouse. If they weigh the risk factors and decide to go to the courthouse, they made that decision.
But our county can't make that decision, because they have to be there. So we have poll workers and all of our county staff there, and they have to be out in the crowds to do their job, so they can't make that decision for themselves.
I recognize that, I have a pro, I agree with Patsy, the transparency issue here. I mean, I, I mean, I can't support closing the courthouse. I mean, I can support, like, reducing the numbers and giving people a certain amount of time or whatnot, I just, I don't think we can just outright say it's shut down on election night, or I at least want to support that.
Well, I've, I've been thinking of this, but I don't know if it's doable. I would, I would like to have, you know, and I know this isn't the same as being in the courthouse, but, you know, an outside screen underneath the porch area, which is posting, running the results, just like there's usually something in the hallway. And then if maintenance could make a big screen, you know, a big screen door that really, that you can't go in, but open the double doors and have that big screen up, so people can look through it and see what's going on as much as possible in the hallways, and also the webcast from actually the room where they're counting. I don't know if that would be satisfactory or helpful in any manner. But that's an option that people at least could see into the courthouse, see the people working. They can't actually see the room where the counting goes on unless they decide to do it a different way this year.
I don't have an issue with what Jane's proposing, but I do, do know that for national elections, most national elections, we have a couple attorneys show up for the national parties, and they will want to have access, because they like to see the actual voting, or not counting, I should say, not voting. I don't know how you make an exception for them, but...
So the, that's what would be, that's what we're planning on live streaming, is the, the counting room.
Okay, I see.
Well, but they want to be in the counting room, looking, making sure that, that's where those attorneys usually show up. They're not for the local candidates, they're usually either governor or presidential.
Well, I think as long as we're within our, within the legal guidelines of what we need to be doing to, to be transparent as far as processing the ballots is concerned, I don't have a problem with just being able to look at it. They wouldn't be able to do any more than look at it if they were physically there. So as long as they're able to do that and hear what's going on, I don't see a problem with that. And, and I do like Jane's idea about the screen, although my concern is protecting the, the people who are inside having to work. And so, that's, that's my biggest concern. If no one else has a concern about, about them, that's too bad, but I think that that is a major concern that we should address, and hopefully we will today, but I do like Jane's idea.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if it's physically doable, but I'm sure something could be built, but it might be cumbersome, but...
A little jinky, but we could just, like, put up a clear shower curtain, if nothing else. You know, if we couldn't do the screen, we could put up a, like, a clear plastic, you know, open the doors, and then have something, a clear plastic barrier or something like that. I mean, I'll work with maintenance to figure something out, if that's, if that's the route that you decide to go. You know, if you want to let people inside, you could mark it off every six feet. So I think even though early voters are not subject to the screening, they are still socially distancing inside that common area. So you could, you know, spread it out, but it's, I mean, it's not a very big space, but if you wanted to spread it out and do that, you, you could. But, I mean, I'll work with whatever you, whatever you decide to do.
Well, I think an issue that we have to think about is, when they're talking about an uptick curve at the future with the flu, that's about the time we're talking about, you know, October, November, yeah. So who knows what's going to happen there?
We're actually talking right now just about the primary, the June 9 primary.
That's true.
Okay.
Well, my concern, and I understand Stephanie's idea, and what we've done with early voting, that everybody's, there's a mark for six feet apart, but I see staff running back and forth between the rooms and so forth on election night, and the poll workers bringing in their stuff and so forth. So, I, you know, I don't like it, but I think we're going to need to really restrict the hallway of the courthouse to public access. And that's why I was looking at the, you know, the screen part, and then webcast what's going on in the room, and I know that's not ideal. And then we'll have to find out from our legal counsel what can be done with this, folks from national that may insist that they need to be in the same room. So, that, those are just my suggestions, and I know, I don't know who else is, Patsy's made somewhat leaning that way. I don't know how others are feeling, or how, how you want Stephanie to proceed.
Well, I'll, I'll support you and your proposal, Jane, but I don't know if, what type of motion do you need for this? That's what, I know we're doing it, but also the state election board probably got their views, too, or Secretary of State.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, too.
Well, there are several counties who are closing, who are not allowing the public in. I mean, that's, but we will definitely, we'll work with the Secretary of State, we don't want to do anything that they don't think we should be doing. And actually, I can check with Nikki right now to see if that's, if his office has said it's okay. So while I'm, I can, if you, if you're, oh, they already checked with the Secretary of State, and the Secretary of State has said that the livestream is acceptable.
Okay. All right.
Well, well, I'll make the motion that we close the courthouse to the public, that we livestream the, the process in the counting room, and that we put some sort of a screen up restricting, restricting access, but being able to see through the hallway from the outside.
Okay. I'll, I'll second. It's, it's no easy way to say it, or however the maintenance department can come up with some sort of solution to that. Okay.
I'll, I'll agree with that. So I was just looking for a reasonable, like, thing to do to... So I was just looking for a reasonable like thing to do to make it that they were there, but not actually completely there. So I, yeah, that's, I'm just trying to be fair and transparent as much as we can considering the circumstances.
Well, the motion is before us and I'm not going to attempt to repeat it.
I don't think I could either.
Okay. Are there any more questions or comments or discussion before we vote? All those in favor of closing the courthouse on election night, but with the adjustments that we talked about to allow public transparency, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. I have county commission reports down here.
I'm not finished yet, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's all I had on the list.
Yeah, well, I just kind of wanted to give you an update. We did receive, Dr. Reedy had talked about those cloth masks, which are very nice. We received a thousand of those to start out with and I am giving the, I'm putting them at all of the entrances for people who may not have masks, but want a permanent one. We do have the paper ones that we were handing out, but this would be a more permanent solution, especially since early voting is going on. So I did, I am handing those out to the different areas and offering the public if they don't have a mask, if they would like to have this cloth one. They have 25,000 of them at the health department, so they're really trying to disseminate them out into the community. So ever, we got a thousand and then she dropped off a thousand to every municipality as well to start with. And then we could get more if we need them. So I thought that they think, they feel like that's an easy way to distribute out to the public who may want a mask, but maybe they just haven't been able to get one. Okay, and I've been getting some messages. Mr. Estep was on the line and I didn't realize it. But he said that he would bear the cost of the transportation for the jail cells. And he also need, would like to have the steel bed. And I'm not sure if Mr. Burke said anything about the steel bed, but if my inclination would be that if it's okay, we still have, you know, those one left for us, then we would be able to donate it, but I don't want to do that without you. I don't want you to do that without your, your knowing that I'm doing it. So apparently there's the cell and then there's a steel bed that it goes on.
Yep, so if you have more than one.
Right.
Okay, with giving them one along with the cell. But I, I want to, I want to know that we still have a complete, a complete cell with everything that, that existed back when we used them.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
With what Patsy said? Josh and Caleb?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
And I'm going to have.
Thank you.
Work with Bill Polk to arrange the transportation for the cell. I'm going to have Bill help.
Right. That works, works well. I was going to say about the availability of masks or can that be posted on our Facebook page or something? So the public knows about that. And maybe that's something too, Brianna can work on as far as like folks as seniors. I'm trying to think how we can reach out to people and let them know we have these reusable masks available. Like a senior center and stuff like that.
So the health department wanted to make sure that all of the frontline workers, which includes anyone in the county who's working right now, that they have one first and then that we get them out to the public. I did buy cloth masks as well. They're cheaper and not as nice as the ones that we got from the health department. So, yeah, I, right now we only have a thousand. So I think if we could tell people that if they come into a county building, they can, we'll give them one for free. I think that the health department is working with other establishments like nursing homes to get the masks to them.
Okay, I see your point, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that makes total sense, yes.
But I will post it on our Facebook page that we are providing them free of charge if anyone wants a cloth mask. And then the bailiffs are going to offer them to people who don't have, you know, who don't have them. If you're early voting, you have to wear one, but we always, you know, encourage them to. So maybe, it just may be that they don't, they actually don't have one, so. And then going back to the, the extension of the ambulance fee, there's, there are two late fee dates. So there, the first one is normally October 1st and then the second one is, Jane, is it in January? Okay, the second one is sometime in the, I think it's December 30th, so January 1st. So did, when did you want the second late fee date to come in? Or did, because we put that on the notice when we send it out. So you've extended the first late fee date from October 1st to January 1st. Oh, Jan- in January, and then, I'm sorry, the second late fee date is January 31st. So basically after February 1st, you would get that second, the increased late fee. So I think if you're going to extend this one to January 1st, or do you want to extend the second one?
Want to extend it to March 31st, it would give them three months like we did between October and January.
That's fine with me, just end the first quarter, that sounds reasonable.
Okay. Everybody, you okay with that?
I'm in agreement.
Yeah.
Caleb, okay. That sounds good.
Okay, all right. I'd really like to thank my staff who's been here in the Hunter House with me dealing through these technical difficulties. They have really been wonderful today. I mean, they're wonderful every day, but without me even asking, they brought me things and I, so I just want to thank them because they're, they're really hard here behind the scenes, even though you can't. And, yeah, and I'm actually, yeah, I'm in here with Sandy and I'm using her computer. So I just want to give a shout out to, to everybody who works in here with, I mean, our, all of our staff is great. But today, my, my staff is, is really great. So I just wanted to let you know they're working really hard, even though you can't.
All right, good. And, and that's everything you have, Stephanie?
Yes, I think that's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on to county commissioner reports. Any county commissioner have anything they want to share?
All I really have is Parks and Rec. So the governor has not released any sort of dates regarding when programs and summer camps, et cetera, can begin. They haven't made a formal decision yet, but if nothing is released soon, I see Parks and Rec potentially not having programs there because they just can't. And that's going to be a massive blow to them financially on top of hotel motels. So I would hope the governor, I know some of the state delegates and senators are trying to push real hard. Even on our weekly or daily call with the health department and all those stakeholders, we had a state rep. I guess nothing has transpired yet though. So I mean, that's a, there's a serious concern for Parks and Rec going forward. That's the only update I have there.
We had our, go ahead, sorry.
I, I'm just going to say I'm concerned about that too. And I've got grandchildren that are gonna, that are missing the programming and, you know, it's tough on the parents and it's, it's tough on the kids and it's tough on Parks and Recs. Not a good situation.
We had our first department head meeting yesterday by a go-to meeting. And we, we invite the department heads from the component unit. So Jennifer Myers was there. Not only are they losing hotel motel, they're losing all their programming revenue. They've laid off all of their part-time staff. So over 400 acres of park right now are being maintained by two full-time maintenance staff. But if they don't have the ability to do some programming soon, they're probably going to have to start laying off their full-time staff as well. So it's, it's not a good situation for Parks and Rec. And they're trying to get through, but the state has not, I mean, they've issued guidance for other types of rec centers. We've brought it up on our task force meetings. It's been on the two o'clock call and they've not issued any guidance for, for them. And Jennifer has been trying to figure out what she can safely do and what programs they can safely offer, not just for their revenue, but for children who, you know, and families who rely on this program. So she did give an update yesterday at the department head meeting and, and they really need to, to be able to start some programming, but they're waiting on guidance from the state.
And one other thing too, there's, there's like two individual maintenance members cutting all the grass and stuff. So I, that's the, I myself even offered to cut grass. I've not heard yet to come back, but i- if this is going forward, I mean, there, there's going to be a need for volunteers to help cut grass. So I know Ralph probably loves riding on the zero-turn lawnmowers. So I mean, that's an opportunity to have some fun and do a good thing, Ralph.
Well, I've, I've actually got two of them, so, yeah. Whatever you need.
It, it will take, yeah, it's a lot of mowing that needs to be done. So, yeah, I'm aware of that just with my own yard, but, yeah. So Parks and Recs definitely in a challenging situation. Other commissioners?
I was just going to say, I, there's a region nine meeting on the 22nd. And I assume, Patsy, are they letting you know?
Yes, Ralph, they are, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a finance committee meeting tomorrow, so, yeah, I'm, I'm getting that information, thanks though.
Well, good. I was going to add on the 23rd, the planning commission is having a meeting in the evening with Gateway with changes to the, or the, I don't want to say it's, it's not a rewrite, but it's the updating the language of the planning commission regulations. And also that same evening, there's, we had a meeting last Tuesday night on solar. And that's going to be final comments on solar, which will then come to the, to the county commission eventually. I guess both of these will for approval. And then on the 24th of June, I have a dinner with, I guess, the unemployment people down in Moorefields. First time, first meeting where I, I guess I'll actually see people. But that's all I have.
Well, the only thing that I have is from last week was we had a J C D A business development meeting. We're still looking for ways to raise revenue. There have been some suggestions. And hopefully we'll be able to move forward with that. Looking forward to have the new director on staff so that, so that that organization can become more financially independent. So that's something we all want to see happen. But thank you all this morning for approving the director. I'm sure Lynn Goodwin will be very happy about that. She has been awesome, by the way.
Caleb?
Not much, just a lot of people still in holding patterns, still trying to figure out what's going on.
Or what they can do.
Yeah.
As opposed to what they cannot do. Okay, yeah, all my meetings have been, you know, virtual or on the, on the telephone and it's not quite the same. I am watching closely as Ralph discussed the, the work before the planning commission on solar farm tax amendments. And I'm sure that'll be interesting and we'll see where it goes if it gets to the commission. But yes, yes, a lot of work to be done there. I can't think of anything else except I need to mow my lawn now. So, you know, there's always mowing to be done.
Hey, Commissioner Tab, quick thing. So a lot of people have been asking about these solar farm things. There's not much information out there other than a brief presentation at the planning commission. I mean, Ralph, are you able to provide a quick detail in a few sentences of exactly what that is?
Well, the issue is, the big issue, solar is allowed in the regular commercial industrial. The, the big issue is to add it to the agricultural. And then the question is, do you limit it? As it's written right now, I think you could have a, your whole farm could be solar with, with some setback requirements. The, that, that's the issue. How far do you go into the agricultural and is it an agricultural use?
So basically it's, they want it to be allowed and unlimited as if it were not agricultural.
That's, that's the initial, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I, I want to say some of the agricultural comments are they want solar. Some of them, they want it as where they could have a small solar farm to supplement their, their income and empower their equipment. But, you know, that's, that's different than having the whole farm as solar. Jane, you may have some more comments on that.
Well, I don't want to get into too big of a discussion since it's not on the agenda. I think you outlined the issues that, yes, it's, it's not in the agriculture zone. It's in the rural zone, which encompasses most of the agriculture. But yes, and it is, would allow solar farms, not just an ancillary solar component to run your house or something like that. But that's my understanding, so. Okay. So there will be another opportunity to comment on those amendments on June 23rd, I believe, is the date.
And it has to come to you because the planning commission is in a legislative body. So before any of those would become final, you would have to implement the ordinance. So it's just the planning commission making a recommendation to you. You will actually have to have a hearing and have, you know, the final word as to whether they get implemented as they're written or whether they're changed. So because you are the legislative body, so.
Yeah, the status, the status of the, the next planning commission meeting is just to, for them to look at a couple of other issues that I'm assisting them with and determine what the final draft is that they're going to actually present to you eventually.
Okay.
I, I should put out since Nathan got on there, one of the issues was decommissioning, how you go about that. I won't go any further, but that, that's an issue too.
Yeah. All right. I believe that concludes all our business to come before us on today's agenda.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
And it's just a reminder that the canvas starts on June 15th at 9:30, that.
Oh, that's a good reminder, yes. Now.
And I think we should plan on staying a while.
And how are we going to be doing that?
Well, that's a, I spoke with Nikki about that and we're not sure yet.
Okay.
I don't know that you can space out in that counting room. But, so, yeah, I'm, I'll work with Nikki to figure that out.
Well, and I think that would be very tough to do virtually. I mean, it, I just don't see us doing that.
No, you gotta, you gotta be there, I think, to, to actually, because you have to hand count.
Right.
I think, so, yeah, you're going to have to be there. I'm thinking maybe we could put some people on the top and distance them out like on the table below. I, I'll work with Nikki. It, it's not going to be six feet apart, but we'll get you as close as we can in that room. Yeah, maybe we could use, yeah, maybe we could use, I'm sorry, I'm in Sandy's office, so that's why. Maybe we could use the courtroom upstairs. If Judge Hammer doesn't have any hearings, maybe he would let us use that room and it would be, that's definitely a large space where we could spread out.
Okay.
I will, I'll work on the details and I'll let you know when we get those, when we get them worked out with Nikki. But it, I mean, regardless, it's going to be on June 15th at 9:30 and I'll let you know where.
Where?
When, when Nikki and I kind of figure out what we're going to do. I don't know if it's possible to move it upstairs since the room is already set up there. But I will, yeah.
Yeah. All righty. Okay, any other business to come before us? Well.
I'm moving.
Second.
Moving and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
I'm going to say aye. Aye, but is the next meeting going to be virtual?
I assumed it would be.
Yeah.
This is an internet, we're having, it would have actually been better if I'd stayed home today rather than coming in the office because there's an internet issue in the office, but hopefully we'll have that fixed so we won't have the problems that we had with today. Apologize about that issue.
Okay. All right, motion before. All right. Motion before us is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you all.
You guys win.